We're going to call to order the Caledonia Community Schools Board of Education meeting for April 18th. Could we all rise for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Can we please have roll call? Yes. Asper. Clement.
Here.
Barbara Garcia. Here. Isitch. Morris.
Here.
Saydu.
Here.
White. Here. I want to stop for just a second, and for those that are new to board meetings or those that have been here before, we do ask that you fill out a comment card if you're here to speak for a public comment section. Those need to be handed in... Oh, back in the corner, right there. So, we just need name for additional contact information for follow-up for anything that's pertinent. Thank you. We are going to move on to consent agenda. We have the March 31st 2022 minutes, April 2022 personnel report, and the March 2022 payables.
I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Are there any questions on those corrections? Can I please have roll call? Clement.
Yes.
Barbara Garcia. Yes. Morris.
Yes.
Saydu.
Yes.
White. Yes. Motion carries. We will move on to five, which is reports and information, and our student representative. We have Emerson with us tonight. Welcome. We are glad to have you here.
Thank you for having me. I'm a student at the high school, and I also participate in Caledonia Student Council, and I'm just going to tell you a little bit about what we're doing to better our school. So, homecoming at the beginning of the year was a super big success. We had a ton of participation, and we improved our school spirit around the school. And I just want to thank the administration for allowing us to plan that because it was a super fun event, especially with not having homecoming year before. It was just really good to get back to a more normal schedule. And it was the first time doing it outside at Scotland Yard, and I thought it actually went really well, and everything went according to plan. There was over 1,000 students that attended the dance, which is a record and the most we've ever had. Another event that we planned that was Fright Night the week of Halloween, so we were able to continue that tradition, and it's just a haunted trail in the back of the high school and allows participation of all grade levels, which we also, again, got a ton of participation for that. We also did a toy and canned food drive, collected over 3,000 items at the high school that were donated to Caledonia and TK Food and Toy Drive, so that was a super big accomplishment. We also recently had the CalSlams Cancer Game, which was a blew-out game to honor David Sauerbee, who passed away from colon cancer in the fall. And we made a lot of money and donated it to the American Cancer Society, and along with some other fundraising events. A lot of people were there to show appreciation for his life, which was really cool to see. We also have a new thing that we're doing, a new committee of mental health, because we realized that mental health is a huge problem in our community and just everywhere this day and age. So, we are working to doing racking, which is random acts of Caledonia kindness. So, we have put together bags, and teachers will suggest a kid or maybe see if they need like a pickup or something like that, and we will hand out the bag to them and just with like an encouraging letter inside and a couple goodies, just so they can feel appreciated and wanted at school and just kind of make the school feel more united and everything. So, that is pretty much what we've been working on, and anyone have any questions?
I want to thank you for being here. We really appreciate it. We've missed not having a student present this year, so are you continuing on with us?
I would love to.
And will you be with us next year again?
Yes, I will.
So, you'll be here through the year. Thank you very much.
No problem.
And I want you to know you do have the option. You're more than welcome to stay. We would love for you to stay, but we know that you do have studies and other things to do, so you are welcome to leave at this time, and I don't want you to feel like you're being rude to do so. So, whatever works best for you.
Okay.
I'm going to stay. All right. Thank you. We're going to move on to six, our discussion items. We have our Chromebook purchase with Mr. Hubble.
Good evening. So, this is on your agenda for action tonight. I guess we'll discuss it first, and we did discuss it last month. So, really, the only thing that's changed now is we actually have budget numbers for it, Chromebook costs of $234.75 apiece, and the Google Management at $29.62 apiece. One thing I'd like to note is that I'm only requesting to purchase 500 Google Management licenses, because over the last several years, we've accumulated a surplus of licenses, and we're going to use about 600 of those as part of this purchase to, you know, give us the full licensing that we need on these. Also, I guess a note is that I am requesting 1,100 Chromebooks instead of 1,000 due to us adding the buys into the mix. I think that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Appreciate that. We're going to move on. Thank you. We move on to six B. Neola first reading. Dr. Martin?
Yes, so recently, we had a board policy meeting to discuss actually a small number of policies and a few other things that we will be working on. One was the number of credits for non-public students. So, occasionally when we have students who are coming from private school into our public school, our policy actually prohibited us from calculating their grades as part of the transcript. But our longstanding practice in the district was to do so, so we just wanted to update the policy to be consistent with the practice that was already occurring in the buildings for a certain time. The other policy that we wanted to make a change to was 5610. So, in a lot of cases, with our practice, when a student is faced with either a possibility of expulsion or a long-term suspension, is what you see in our policy. Almost everything said it went directly to the superintendent. In reality, depending on what's going on, there's a process where it goes through the building administration first, so we just wanted to clean up the language in a lot of cases to identify, is superintendent or designee? And a rare occasion where I haven't been able to maybe let's say do an expulsion hearing, which I think has happened once or twice in four years, the assistant superintendent do it in my absence. So, that was the biggest change there. The other thing was cleaning up the language as it relates to suspensions. Up to a certain point, all suspensions are handled at the building level by building principals, and then if it goes beyond that, i.e. a long-term suspension or expulsion, it makes it up to the superintendent's level. So, we just wanted to clean up the policies to be more reflective of the practices that they're facing. And next, use of school facilities. So, this one, I may have Mr. Hess jump in, but what we really wanted to do is look at... The only thing that we added to 7510 was to make the request for use of facilities in writing or electronically, and it goes to the superintendent or designee. So, it's another example of practicality when everything was a request to use the building, which happens all the time. It goes to another department, not directly to the superintendent, so we wanted to clean up the language, and then we've been working to update our facility usage costing to just be more in line with the district and current standards out there. So, that is the three big changes there. Then, we also have some bylaws, policy updates that were pretty much required through Neola. So, Policy 1616 as well as 5511. These policies essentially dealt with student and staff dress and grooming, so we discussed that at the board bubble. I'm sorry. We discussed that at the committee level, and essentially, there was one language in the policy that was taken out of the policy. This is new and recommended by Neola, but we felt our policies were pretty consistent in terms of setting the standard for dressing room for all students and staff, and didn't need that last language. So, that was consistent with Policy 1616 as well as 5511. Then, we needed some clean-up language as it relates to 6E110, and that is dealing with grant funds. And so, we needed to add the statement in green that was just keeping us compliant or moving us in line with legal requirements as we have received the ESRA grant funds already. As we continue to receive that, we want to make sure that our policy was indicative that we're in line with federal program standards for use of those funds. And that was pretty much the same thing with 6114 as well as 63... 24? 6325. These were required just to make sure that as we receive and spend and utilize these funds, we're compliant with federal guidelines for how they can be used.
Are there any questions for Dr. Martin on that? You all have that language available. Again, this is the first reading. We will have a second reading before those, for those to be adopted. So, please review, and if you do find that you have any questions, then let's just get those in. All right. We will move on to six C, which is administration high density storage. Mr. Hess.
Good evening. Thank you. High-density storage is the administration building. This is the second presentation of this, and there have been no changes to the original plan. Again, this building was designed with that room intentionally left blank so that we could figure out what the future needs were going to be, and we found that we can get some high-density storage in there and come up with an equal amount of storage to the much larger states we had over at Old Admin. So, we're looking forward to getting that in. Are there any questions on the plan at all there?
It continues to be your show. Oh, you're next. I'm sorry. Go right ahead. Any idea how long that storage will be adequate, or when... Sorry, I can speak louder, or maybe down here more. Okay. What, like, how long do you think that that will be adequate storage, or will we need more at some point?
We've been looking at...
By when?
We've been looking at the retention, the records retention rules, and I think we found that a fair amount of what we have currently in storage can be shredded.
Okay.
So, I think we're going to be paying closer attention to those things going forward.
Got it.
Also, some of the storage in any other space was for other departments. So, I believe this will be adequate and sufficient for quite a while.
Thank you. Any additional? Tim?
Just on that point, we did talk about other options that we might see down the road, like archiving to PDF so that it's a little more searchable or other benefits for that matter. So, we did talk about other options and ideas, but this was the best one.
All right. We're going to continue on to six B, which is bond honey, honey, window film installation.
As part of the 2020 bond program, each building was slated to receive some window security filming. The best use of this determined to be at sensitive and high-potential locations. We did develop a map of those locations and published in RFQ. We did receive excellent pricing and a good response of five quotes at a public opening. The apparent low bidder was disqualified as they are not a certified installer of the 3M product that we specifically called out for in the RFQ. We specifically called out that product with no openness for the consistency across the district and what we're comfortable and familiar with using. A good idea and an excellent product. The second low bidder is a premier certified supplier and installer of the requested product. There was a, there is a map available, not for public consumption. I think that's a security issue that we're all going to respect, and I appreciate that. This is a $140,428 quote based on a first-hand book price of $15.20. And the respondent is actually out of, the bid winner is actually out of Florida, which was a bit of a surprise to us, since we found out he is a Michigan native and enjoys coming back to do installations. So, excellent references as well.
Jason?
Do we have a timeline for when that work would begin and complete?
They've been tentatively told to June 4th. It will be this summer.
Okay.
Additional questions? All right. Thank you. Six B, which is bond 2020 high school interior signage.
As part of the 2020 bond program, each school has a prepared budget for the replacement of interior signage, room signage. The design for interior signage is standardized for the greatest ease in repair, replacement, staff transfers, and consistency throughout the district. As part of the 2020, 21, excuse me, 2020, 21 bond construction work, the signs for Duncan Lake Middle School, Craft Meadows, and the administration building were completed using Midwest Sign. We are recommending continuing on with Midwest Sign for all of the remaining projects. The high school happens to fall above the threshold in the bond for presentation and approval by the board. I do not predict the remaining buildings will, but this is a very large package of sign replacement. This covers both the north and south high schools. Demonstration or the look of the signs, you'll see them here. You can also step outside in the hallway and see they are exactly the same as this building. So, it'll provide a nice consistency across the district. This is a $32,370 investment from the bond, which I will share that is below the budget for either of the two buildings. So, we will have bond funds to contribute back and use for other purposes.
Jason?
So, with the other buildings not necessarily falling above the threshold for board, can you provide maybe a little bit of... Are we doing those at the same time now too, or...
No, we are, we're sequencing them. They can be done through the school year. Most of them are fairly easy. In fact, we just completed or are completing Duncan Lake right now. It does take some time, so we're getting advance on each one of them. I'll be handing over the next building probably around June.
Do you can just include in your updates when you send them, just when they're done, just so that... Just so we know. Tim, did you have a question? All right. Perfect. Thank you. All right. We are going to move on to six F, which is bond 2020 Paris Ridge HVAC controls.
This one was a bit of a surprise to us. It's okay. As part of the 2020 bond program, Parish Ridge Elementary was programmed for the replacement of the temperature HVAC control system. Parish Ridge is on a separate, different platform and different control system than the outburst of the district as a result of the last bond. The district has standardized since on one system using a generic hardware system with a graphic interface design integration that is proprietary to Control Solutions Incorporated of Wyoming here. This hardware standardization allows us excellent flexibility for repair, replacement, parts availability, and ability to just use it without logging into several different systems. Within the past year, we have gone from three different control systems down to two, and this will bring us fully online with just one control system District Y. It is a significant investment of $144,510. However, that is also below the budget that was provided for in the bond, so we're under budget on this project as well.
Your budget is not something to get to here very often, so...
Nope. Not to say that all three of them, so...
Yeah, absolutely. Are there any que... Tim?
I was just going to ask the timeline question again. When are we looking to do this work?
This one may be challenging because of the acquisition of some of the pieces and parts. We're planning to get it done this summer. We'd like to get it while the building is not in use so that we can fully take down the system. That's our goal, would be this summer.
And if there are delays, are we locked in at this price, or could it go higher as...
This one is, it's a locked-in price.
Do you have a question?
No, you don't. Great minds.
Gotcha. All right. Before we move to seven and the minutes begin, sorry to be annoying, but I would give a reminder again. If you are here for a public comment, we ask that you fill out a card and turn that in the back corner over here. You do have three minutes to speak, and that this is a time when you can address the board on any issue. It is not to address personnel issues. Thank you. We're going to move on to seven, which is board and superintendent reports. We had curriculum and learning committee. They did not have a meeting this month, so we will move on to seven B, which is finance and operations committee.
Thank you, and the chair. Finance and operations committee convened April 14, 2022 at 7:30 a.m. Mr. Hubble followed up on the upcoming purchase of 1,000 Chromebooks as previously presented and discussed at last month's committee and board meetings. There's currently a 12-week delivery lead time, which would enable units to be deployed and start school in fall. Mr. Hess followed up on the proposed identity storage purchase from Esther Office for the administration, for the new administration office as briefly discussed last month. This is the final step in completing the administration's move out of the Duncan Lake facility. Committee recommends the board consider a request for district-wide key and key location window film installation through a under-partner international energy centers. Signage at the high school is another action item coming to the board. This is a continuation of standardizing the district signage through the bond and is being handled by Midwest Sign. Final action item is to replace the HVAC temperature controls at Parish Ridge Elementary. This will continue to the work to standardize our systems District Y for better management and integration. Another item of discussion involved the early childhood center and the YMCA spacing. We're in the initial stages of repurposing the former administration office to expand our early childhood programming. Mr. Hess discussed the RFP that will be going out for custodial services and signs that would be going around the district, looking to fill our shortages in this area. We'll be maintaining our current staff, continuing the plan to hire open positions while seeking to contract out work in order to fill the large vacancies we've been experiencing all year. Us purchase recommendation will be coming to the board for discussion next month. Mr. Vries provided an update of Kent County's district fund balances. Caledonia Falls in the middle with just over 17% fund balance. Staff salaries and benefit levels will also discuss, and what the percentage threshold is for our district to maintain fiscal best practices. Mr. Kingsbury provided an update on staffing and negotiations, while Dr. Martin provided an update of the district, and it will be a rush from now through the end of the year. Meeting adjourned at 8:11. Next finance and operation committee is scheduled for 7:30 a.m. on Thursday, May 12.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for that committee? Appreciate that. Policy committee, we did meet. The policy committee met on March 29th. The meeting began at 7:31 a.m. and adjourned at 10:39 a.m. The meetings from the prior policy committee were accepted. District administration discussed policies that cover a variety of topics, some of which were brought to the board tonight for a first reading. Also reviewed were the spring 2020 update, which included new and revised policies as recommended by our board policy consultation for Neola. Tonight, you heard the first reading on those, and those will be followed by a second reading and final adoption at the May 2020 regular board meeting. Any additional questions on, for policy? All right. We are going to move on to board reports. Any board members that have anything?
We do have the information for adopter road. That information, you can show this for me here. Right? I think the first week was this week. Today would not have been a good day, so you will get a text message from me, and we'll figure out sometime either later this week or very beginning of next week if we can make that happen. We'll get it done. I have one additional. So, right before spring break, we had the privilege of being invited to an orchestra, band, and choir concert that was with the intent of honoring Pete DeLue, and he had sent a letter that he could not be here tonight, so he asked that this was red. Dear Board of Education members and school administration, I would like to take a few minutes of your time this evening to thank you for the recent decision to rename the Fine Arts Center. Needless to say, I was shocked. However, I was also very humbled, grateful, and appreciative. Though these words may seem a bit redundant, it is the best I can do to express my feelings towards this wonderful gift. I am very thankful to all of you for the role that you play in carrying on the traditions of excellence that we enjoy in Caledonia Community Schools. I also thank you for supporting our wonderful fine arts program and staff. On a personal note, I'd like to express the gratitude that I have for my time as a teacher at Caledonia Community Schools. In fact, I owe a great debt of gratitude for the family life that evolved for me as a member of staff here. I'd like to briefly rewind back to the fall of 1979. I was in my second year of teaching the high school band when along came a first-year teacher by the name of Amy Sparks. So, one day, I marched the band to her classroom window and had the students serenade her with a school song. It was the only song we could play all the way through at that point in the year. Then, the rest is history. We were married the next summer. We eventually were blessed with three children and nine grandchildren, some of whom are involved in the music program in our school system. I just want to tell you that this story, so that you know how important the school has been to me on a personal and professional level. Here's a very brief but pertinent history of our orchestra program. Years ago, in 1984, the schools allowed me to start an orchestra program with a few small classes in the elementary schools. The foresight that the school leaders showed in this critical juncture in our history gave us a quality orchestra program that now serves over 500 students each year from grades five to 12. We now have three quality performing arts programs with band, choirs, and orchestra. I thank you, board members and administrators, for carrying on the tradition of excellence that is so important to every child in this school. Thank you so much for remembering me with this, remembering me with this wonderful honor, and again, I am deeply humbled, appreciative, and grateful. Thank you, Pete DeLue.
All right. If there's any additional board? Thank you.
All right. I have quite a few updates that I just want to make, bring up, but I'll try to make it quick. We're entering that season where our legislators will be very busy over the coming weeks and months as they prepare for the upcoming budget and try to fast-track a lot of legislation through. So, I provided one update in memo. I'll try to do that just so you're aware of some of the more pressing legislation that affects public education that's coming through the pipeline. So, if you ever have additional questions, please feel free to give me a call. We put a save the date for graduation ceremony in there for May 24th. This will be the first time that we are having a graduation ceremony at Calvin University beginning at 7:00 p.m. Board members can look for more details. Board members can look for more details that we'll give from high school as we get closer to that date. We were supposed to actually have graduation ceremony at Calvin a few years back, but due to COVID, those things have been postponed. So, this will be the first time that we have it there in a larger venue, so forward to that. PTO dialogue, last week, we had a very good turnout of PTO representatives from all of the buildings as well as several administrators. We, not only did we kind of have just a normal dialogue with Doc, but we talked about a PTO Key Communicators Group that will be meeting three or four times a year starting in the fall, and kind of the roles and responsibilities of that. Additionally, as you've heard through the various committees, we are beginning the process for the replacement of Mr. Hubbell. We are trying to get him to stick around for another fifteen years. He refused to do so, so we're going to be interviewing for his replacement. And that process have already begun, and as a little bit this afternoon. The HR Department and the Curriculum Department partnered together to start going around to our two elementary buildings and meet with staff to just kind of give a little feedback of what we're looking for in the next leaders with MNs and with Paris Ridge respectively. Other information, more so just a kudos to our people accounting department, or if you will, our people accounting person. We have, we serve hundreds of students. Hundreds is probably a bit of a understatement, in our private schools through what we call a shared time program. And so, about a year ago, we added a new people accounting person, and they have gone through the process for FTE adjustments, and we had zero adjustments to make. That is pretty phenomenal when you're talking about the sheer complexity and the number of students we serve across not just our district, but multiple other districts. Congratulations to Ms. Homestir and all the staff that's working to support her in getting those numbers right. The other thing, we once again have applied for the E-three grant, and we are very happy and fortunate to have some of the village township, the village representatives, Mr. Thornton and Ms. Lindsay, they provided letters of support. We've applied for this grant a few times before, because we are not a district that has as many or as high of a percent of students as struggling as some other districts. We don't always get top priority, but we keep applying for the grant funds because we know it's support that our students need. But regardless of the grant funds, I put a chart in our memo for the board kind of showing the incremental improvements that we have been making in terms of adding more counseling and social work staff each year. And so, that was kind of one of the things that we committed to during and even before the strategic plan, looking at areas in the district where we were either not properly staffed or needed more resources and supports. And so, this is just an example, and you'll see for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, there is a big increase specifically in the number of counselors that we plan to put into our school buildings. And that is largely, in part, that is largely due to the Esra funds. It is an allowable expense, and so we will be using those funds to try to beef up supports in the buildings around the whole child and making sure that we're caring for the kid beyond just academics, but with some of the social and emotional challenges that we're hearing about with students across the state, across the country, and certainly in our school community as well. Summer learning information has been sent out to parents, and also, this information has been put on our district website as we prepare for trying to help some students who may have struggled academically during the last two years of the pandemic. So, just like last summer, we had some opportunities specifically for these kids. We have additional opportunities, and again, that information can be found on our website. Also, due to the tragic event that occurred a few weeks back in the Grand Rapids area where a man in a, during a stop with an officer, was tragically killed, we did provide some information to our staff, just letting them know about trauma-informed practice and support so that if any of our students or our staff members had questions or concerns, or just needed to understand how to help a kid. They know which staff members to send them to, who are trained to help kids if they were struggling, so just be aware that that communication was provided to our staff, and you should have received a copy of that. Prom location change, we are very fortunate that our high school administration team, staff, and prom event planners were able to quickly relocate the prom. We were, had been in contact with Kent County Sheriff Department as well as, I believe, the Grand Rapids Police Department, and we had our prom located in the downtown Grand Rapids area. And so, out of an abundance of caution, we felt that it would be best to make sure that our kids are safe by moving them to a different venue. So, kudos to everyone for being able to pull that off in about two and a half days' notice, and still was able to pull off a pretty successful prom event, so we are very happy that they could do that. And last but not least, construction cost escalation. So, we had a special meeting right before spring break, I believe it was Trustee Clement who had some questions regarding the cost escalations from when we went out to the bond up to this point, and so we reached out to part of the bond team. Chrisman has provided some information. If there's some additional information that we didn't quite get it right, please let us know, and we'll double back. But in essence, in that two-year period, we saw an average of twenty-four-point-two-five percent increase in the, just in the materials cost, and that doesn't include the increases that we will definitely see in labor. So, we are continuing to work on some information for follow-up discussion with the board. Partly, what we want to do is move forward with our bidding process like we discussed, see what those bids actually come in at, and the cabinet, as well as the maintenance team and the bond team have been kicking around some ideas that we will share in terms of what the board's options may be to try to keep our costs in line as we move forward with the bond. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions? We're at a long quite a bit.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move on to our public comment. I would ask that all cards please be turned in at this time. I will read them, I will put, read who's going to speak, who's on deck, and who's to follow. So, first, we have Melissa, followed by Susan, and then Brandon.
Good evening. Excuse me. I am here for your monthly CE report. Sorry I missed last month, but you started, we'll have that time. The English department at Caladonia High School worked hard to develop an amazing project that expands learning outside of a textbook. Teresa Younger, Kaylee Schirpsing, Sarah Rubel, and Eric Pinder are providing students in English ten intensive, as well as English ten with a multi-genre research project, which explores an issue of interest where students see a need for change or adaptation as an opportunity to better society as a whole. Students are in the research and development phase and will finalize their thesis arguments this week. From there, students create various genres of writing to showcase their research and understanding of both the issue as well as their projected solution. Instead of writing a traditional research essay, students decide how to deliver the material through creative expression based on student voice and choice. This project showcases students' growth and development through the year in researching, MLA formatting, writing both formal and creative, as well as reading comprehension and presentation skills. Emily Bowman and Michelle Krentz implemented a new program this year at the seventh and eighth-grade building for Lakes. Our special education students have really benefited from this new program, being able to incorporate it into their everyday school day. Our general ed students and staff members have also gained a new perspective. We're so thankful to have an amazing program that allows students to get accepted for who they are. Paris Ridge is celebrating Diversity with Autism Awareness Month, organized by Meredith DeBaba and Erin Casello. Students and staff have the opportunity to learn more about autism through this month as spirit days, lessons taught by Ms. Erin and Ms. Meredith, and true and false questions posted throughout the building. Eric Pinder, he's from Two Things, that's his. He's an English teacher at CHS, had students read a novel set in Africa during the eighteen-nineties, and to celebrate their accomplishment of reading the novel and learning a bit more about the Igbo tribe, he cooked a traditional African dish for his students to sample and enjoy. And on a personal level, I would like to thank the board members, our school resource officer, Dr. Kingsbury, and Dr. Martin for coming in and reading it. I was like, Mark is reading one. So, thank you for taking time out of your very busy schedule.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. Next, we have Susan, followed by Brandon, and then Betsy.
Good evening. My name is Susan Muse, and my family and I have lived in the Caladonia community for thirty-two years. Ken and I are retired Caladonia teachers. Both our children attended school here at P-12. I'm telling you this because I want you to understand the deep roots I have in the Caladonia community and how long I've called it home. When we first moved here, it was a small farming community. As it proved, Caladonia still retained the well-earned reputation of having an excellent school system and a family-friendly caring community, a small-town feel. I've been very distressed to listen to comments that are being given during recent school board meetings, and I think some people need reminders of who we are as a community. First, the people on the board are our Caladonia neighbors. They are Caladonia residents who have heeded the call for public service and give a tremendous amount of their time, talent, and effort in representing us and the running of our schools. They should be respected. In fact, we treat everyone in the community with respect because that is the Caladonia way. For all this to work, there needs to be trust. Trust in the established system, trust in the people who we elect to make decisions for our school, and trust and respect to the people they hired to teach and work with our children. We need to push back against people who try to sow the seeds of distrust in our system and people. While teaching at Caladonia, I have the privilege of working with and coming to know so many extraordinary families. Families that not only cared about their children, but cared and participated in making Caladonia a very special place to live. That is the Caladonia way too. We are a community that moves over in our car and gives people walking a friendly way. We see familiar faces when we attend athletic and musical events at our high school. We join in the form of parades and festivals. We are bonded in friendship and caring. When we have these bonds as a community, when there are disagreements and problems that arise, because that's what happens sometimes, we can come together with the respect and trust of a tightly knit community to resolve these issues. That is the Caladonia way, and what a wonderful example for our children to follow. So, Caladonia, let's stand together in strengthening those community ties that bind us together. Let's link arms in building up and supporting our schools, willing to lend a hand when needed. Let's pledge to show respect to each other. That is the community that I have called home for so many years.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Brandon, followed by Betsy, and then, is it Micah?
Micah.
Micah?
So, my first question is, what is the board's policy on attendance? Because it seems to me that Mrs. Isaac doesn't show up to a lot of events. What are the committee hearings or are these board meetings? So, that'd be my first question, and I'll respond to you. The second thing that I have is, it's brought to my attention that there was a request to make a policy change for the board not to hear any appeals based off of matters that were, or based on things that were appealed on operations, which, to the community members in the room, I appealed in February to the board about a bus stop, which was an operations matter. So, that would basically not enable me to appeal to the board, which really surprises me, because first of all, from a board's perspective, why would you want to take your own power away? Right? I mean, you're basically saying in yourself now, and any future board members moving forward. Second of all, why is it so hard for you to deal with parents that appeal to you? I mean, that's kind of what you signed up for, right? So, I mean, if you don't want to do it, that's cool, just resign. We'll find more board members to replace you. That's okay. So, I guess those are my two questions that I think you should.
Thank you. Next, we have Betsy, followed by Micah.
So, I would actually agree with the lady who spoke, that was a teacher. I'm sorry, I forgot what your name is. I guess it comes with trust, and it is a great community. I think that's why most people come to Caladonia that are from outside. But it starts with trust. I don't see a lot of trust when I go through our school stuff. I just don't. I also want to bring up, sorry, I didn't really prepare anything. I wasn't sure if I was supposed to talk to you or not, because I kind of give up on Caladonia. I think that sucks. I really do. I think it does. It sucks a lot. But why do we have so many problems in our schools and with our kids? My personal opinion is politics. You open up a textbook, it's political. We send our kids to school for an education. I don't know anybody who sends their kids to school to have therapy sessions. I want my son and my daughter to go to school and get an education. Math, science, English, the basics. They don't need a social-emotional lesson. That's my opinion. We spend so much money in our school focused on what grants we're getting, what funding we're getting, like it's a fascinating. What about the education? To me, that should be a primary focus, because I want my children to be successful. I don't want my, my child to want to sit on a board like this, or be a principal, or something else. But are we really, really setting our children up for that? Are we just setting them up to sit in a safe space, to be worried about stuff? Yes, there's a lot of issues, but I can tell you, because I know, it all is a cultural issue. It's, stop bringing that crap into our schools and teach our kids. Yes, kids are going to come and do with problems, I get it, but it's not your job to teach my child their emotions, any sexual stuff, any racial things. I can do that at home. You can address that with them. When you have an issue like in a downtown, I can at least talk about it, because parents do. But let's focus on the education. It's really plain and simple, because a lot of schools do just focus on education and not, like, every grant that we're getting, that I see, it's all social-emotional stuff. To me, knock it off. Parents don't want that stuff. Majority of parents just want their kid to be educated, be successful. Maybe you think social-emotional learning and all that other kind of stuff is going to make them successful. I personally think it's going to put them in a safe space and be scared to do everything in life. It's not the real world, because when they go to the real world, they're going to get eaten up and spit out, spit out, because they're going to be so terrified of everything. But that's it. Next, next, that was my last meeting, and then I quit on you guys, so I'll, thank you for everything. I do appreciate it. Hopefully, I'm not one of the ones that are so mean to you, like everyone's been so mean to you, but thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Micah.
Hello. I've got a few things to hand out, if that's all right. My name's Micah Perkins. I'm with the Michigan Building Trades. I might have one short, because I did see you see over here, from my perspective. But, so my job, my day job is I represent skilled construction I might have one short because I didn't see you sitting over here. But so my job, my day job is I represent a skilled construction worker in west, southwest Michigan. I cover an area roughly from Manistee down to Indiana and a little bit west of Lansing off of the lake. And I've been doing this a little while, not terribly long. So I asked for a little bit of grace because not that long ago I was a plumber under a toilet somewhere. So just a little patience if I say something out of turn. But what I've been doing in the area that I cover is I've been going around the school districts in that area talking about construction as an occupation. Caladonia actually is one of my, I was really looking forward to tonight because I actually have one of your teachers who sits on a different school board reach out to me after I presented at that school board meeting. Kristin Cavell, who's an English teacher in this district. And she asked if I could participate in a project-based learning thing that she was doing with her students, and I said absolutely. And it was a really cool project. It got to meet a number of very interesting night creators, which as a side note, it's a relief to me as a parent to meet other night creators than my kids because they're all strange, not just mine. So anyway, all that to say, I really appreciate the flexibility and creativity that you have in your school district. So what do we do here? So this, these are all the construction trades that are involved in building a building, right? And the thing that I try to bring to you guys is the viability of these as a career. Now, because we've taken shop out of most high schools and we've kind of preached college to the exclusion of everything else, we as a trade are aging out. I think the average age on the construction side right now is about 53. It's really not sustainable. And what we'd like to do is get access to your students at an age before they get to the point where they decide to go to the tech center or not. Because as you know, unless you have a family member who's going to the center or in the trades, you're not thinking about that as a career. But I can tell you, coming from the plumbers and pipetors where I'm from, the only organization that spends more on training than we do is the US military. We spend about $450 million a year training our people. If you go into a plumbing and piping apprenticeship, over that five years, we're going to spend about $150,000 on you specifically. You're going to come out of that five years with no debt with a realistic expectation of making six figures right then and there with something that will never be done overseas and will never be turned in software. We need your help to do this. As a side note, we'd also love to build your buildings. The thing that we can bring that no one else can say is that we can absolutely mend the work because there's a lot of work shortages right now. We can pull workers from across the US and even Canada to finish your work. So if that's a consideration when your bids packages are out, we'd like to be part of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, at this time, we are going to move on to our action items. We have 9A, which is a chrombook purchase.
I move that the board approve the technology chrombook purchase that supplies in the amount that exceeds $275,000.
Second. Are there any additional questions? Can I have a roll call, please? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia, yes. Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries onto 9B, administration, high-density storage.
I move that the board approve the purchase of a Asper Corporation high-density storage filing system for customer office furniture as well.
I have a second.
Second.
Any additional questions? Can I have a roll call, please? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia, yes. Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries onto 9C, Niola first reading. Again, remembering that this is a first reading. If there's any questions or concerns, please do follow up.
I move that the board move, that was, let me try that again. I move that the board conduct a first reading of the following Niola policies. 1616, 5463, 5511, 5610, 6110, 6114, 6325, and 7510.
You have a second? Second by Tyler. Any additional questions? Can I have a roll call, please? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia, yes. Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries onto 9D, 2020 window film installation.
I move that the board approve the superintendent to enter into a contract with International Energy Savers for the supply and installation of security window film at Caladonia Elementary Schools.
Second. Second by Brittany. Any other discussion on that? Can I have a roll call, please? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia, yes. Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries onto 9E, 2020 high school interior signage.
I move that the board approve the superintendent to enter into a contract with Midwest Sign Company for manufacture and installation of interior signage at Caladonia High Schools as recommended.
You have a second. Any additional questions? Can I have a roll call, please? Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia, yes. Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries onto 9F, 2020 Parish Ridge Elementary HVAC controls.
I move that the board approve the executive director of operations and transportation to enter into a purchase order agreement with control solutions eight for the installation of HVAC controls, hardware, and integration of HVAC control systems, software, as recommended.
Second.
Second.
Second by Tyler. Any additional questions on that?
Sorry, I do have a question. I probably should have brought it up during discussion, and I did think of it. Just as it relates to this as a decent-sized budget item, and as we had the special meeting talking about reducing things at the new Dutton, I guess I was just trying to figure, like, how does this come into play with that? Like, could we postpone this $140,000 and use that towards one of the contingencies for Dutton Elementary? As far as those driveways and stuff are concerned? I mean, what are, I get having one system would be preferable by far. But I guess what are we, what are, that's all. That's my question.
So obviously, we wouldn't recommend it, but it is something that could be postponed if the board is not.
So this isn't something that we would like have to do because of, we said we would do it in a bond, kind of thing?
I believe we did specify in the bond that we did, we would.
Is that, was that HVAC upgrade? I just wasn't sure if it's specifically called out like there's a big HVAC upgrade. I can't remember all the details, so that's why I'm asking the question.
So we did talk about when we instructed this bond, a couple of years ago, that that was our only building that was in power. And then we had three buildings that didn't have ACs so that we would upgrade. We put AC in two of the buildings. One, we upgraded, two, we built a new building, and then the control system would be upgraded in Parish Ridge. So that was spelled out in the bond. It is something that we could ultimately move if the board felt that that was more appropriate and determine a little bit later. You know, obviously, we'd like to move forward, but can I ask a simple answer to your question? Yes, it could be moved.
So I guess what, other than, you know, the niceties of one system, I guess what economies of scale are we getting? Or what are we, what are we lacking in having two separate systems?
Matt will probably be a little bit better. I think the one thing that we do have to be careful, whatever we defer, and this would be fine, if it's deferred, likelihood the cost will be higher when we come back to this particular item. But for some of the efficiencies and sculpt up the challenge to have one building on its own, now turn it over to him.
Yeah, it is a small incremental piece that we do have where our staff are required to log into a completely separate system to make the, to try and make adjustments to the Johnson control system. It's also caused, so it's time of our staff. It also requires a set of ordering of parts and supplies that are very different. It also have a higher cost than the generic supplies that we would move to. So there's a cost there that is continually going up. We have a cost simply because it is on Johnson controls. So that's proprietary system that we are paying annual fee for. It would go away. So it's a, to us, it's a cost issue. It's also a control issue. We do have challenges, to use the word nicely, controlling Parish Ridge Elementary, keeping consistent temperatures and consistent raising and lowering of the temperature throughout the year in that building. And this would resolve all of those problems as we, much in the same way that we resolved those problems for Catalage and Calale. So it is something that would need to be done at some point eventually if we did decide to delay it. But again, at what cost increase at this point? And this is, like I said before, coming in under budget. So we are bringing back a portion of these funds because we were able to do it significantly under budget back to that other project. I would say this is about, I believe, 60% of what the budget was for this item. So we're looking to bring that money back at least right now.
And I probably have more other things. This is the, we were talking about this too for, hopefully, summertime, right?
Yes.
To have less disruption, and that probably another thing. If we delay it, it could be pushing it into school year.
Correct.
It could make things difficult.
Do we happen to know the licensing cost and the trade cost difference? I have those.
Do not have those figures in. I could certainly supply them.
Thank you. Just think it was something to consider or at least talk about.
We'll go ahead and move forward at this time with the vote, and then if we need to postpone, we will. Clement?
Yes.
Barbara Garcia, yes. Morris?
Yes.
Saydu?
Yes.
White?
Yes. Motion carries. At this point in time, I'd like to thank everybody for coming. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. Sorry. Well, the microphone hasn't proved. Obviously, it's still going to be a challenge. I mean, thank you for the changes we made. I just need motion to adjourn, please. Second?
Second by Jason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.